Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Today's date is April 28, 2021. It's Wednesday at 2:00 p.m., and this meeting is hereby called to order. At this time, I'll ask the clerk if you would please call the roll and establish quorum.
Supervisors Desmond?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
Serna?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, April 30 at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14. And a DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. At this time, I'll invite everyone to please join me in the rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In compliance with the directives of the county, state, and centers for disease control and prevention, this meeting is livestream and closed to the public. Temporary procedures are subject to change pursuant to guidelines related to social distancing and minimizing person-to-person contact. To make a verbal comment at today's meeting, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in the queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda and/or watch the meeting to follow along and determine when it's the best time to call in to be placed in the queue to make your public comment. You may be on hold for an extended period of time, and your patience is greatly appreciated. When I open the public comment for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter, clerk staff will begin transferring you into the meeting. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item. Members of the public are limited to making one public comment per agenda item and off-agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected when making more than one public comment on a single agenda item or off-agenda matter. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding. Written comments are also accepted. Send your email comment to boardclerk@saccounty.net. Your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record. Thank you again for your patience.
Would you please transfer the presenter for item number one? That would be the Sacramento-Yolo Mosquito and Vector Control District presentation.
And we do have, we are dropping, do we need to discuss dropping?
No, we can, we can drop that officially when we hit 3:00.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Goodman, are you there?
I am here. Hopefully, you can hear me.
Yes. Before we go forward, I wonder if we have any off-agenda callers?
Oh, let me check.
It's afternoon.
Okay, we do not have any off-agenda callers at this time.
Thank you, Flo.
Okay, Mr. Goodman, I do have your presentation, and when you need me to advance to the next page, I will do that for you.
All right. That sounds perfect. Thank you so much for all the help, and thank you to the board for the invitation to come talk a little bit about mosquito and vector control and what we're anticipating for this upcoming season. My name's Gary Goodman. I'm the district manager and for the Sacramento and Yolo Mosquito Vector Control District. And we are a bi-county agency, a special district that covers all of Sacramento and Yolo County specifically to help protect the public health from vector-borne disease. Next slide, please. So essentially, our mission is to provide vector control for all of the residents of both Sacramento and Yolo County. And we work very closely with California Department of Public Health, with CDC, with UC, a lot of different agencies, to make sure that we're doing appropriate surveillance and information out to the public so that they know what the risks are associated with mosquito and vector-borne disease, and how to prevent themselves from getting sick and how to prevent from mosquito production on their own properties. Next slide, please. So for the most part, we look for various breeding sources throughout our district on a daily basis. And so there's a picture here of a number of different breeding sources. Some of these are very easy for us to see, like rice fields or wetlands. Anytime that there is open water, especially with vegetation interface associated with it, you're going to find mosquitoes. Some of the harder things for us to see are the things that are in people's backyards, such as old bird baths or buckets, things that are filled up with the irrigation, because we can't see into everyone's backyard. So we really utilize the public's help in being able to try to identify that they're being bothered by mosquitoes and to know that they can call the district. And typically, we come out within 24 hours to be able to try to address and take care of any mosquito issues that you may be seeing on your own property. So for us, one of our messages to the public is to take a look around your own yard and look for any standing water in any of these types of containers. If a container can hold water for more than about a week, that's the potential to breed mosquitoes, and we want people to dump that water out to make sure that they're not exacerbating the problem that we already have. Next slide, please. So we use what we call an integrated mosquito management approach, and there's kind of five components to it. The first is public information. We have a very active social media program. We do a lot of advertising on radio and television. We used to go to a lot of events, but obviously, in this pandemic, we're not able to do that. But we are available for online or Zoom calls with neighborhood associations or Rotary Clubs, those types of things, because we still want to make sure that we're getting information out to the general public as to what they can do to try to better prepare themselves so that they're not breeding mosquitoes and they're not being bitten, and then they know the dangers associated with diseases such as West Nile virus. The second part of our program is what we call surveillance, and this is where we set traps out throughout the district, all over both Sacramento and Yolo County, so we can assess both abundance of mosquitoes and different types of mosquitoes. So within our district, we have about 24 different species of mosquitoes. Not all of them transmit disease. Only female mosquitoes bite, actually. Male mosquitoes just feed on nectar. But our surveillance program is designed for us to be able to try to figure out if there's any fluctuations in the population, and then, of course, do testing, to where we're testing both mosquitoes and birds to see if they're carrying any active virus, such as West Nile. The third component of our IPM program is biological control, and on our facility, our main facility is in Elk Grove off of Bond Road, and we have 23 ponds where we breed mosquito fish. So the photo right there in the center of the slide there is a bunch of mosquito fish, and we plant these free of charge. All you have to do is give us a call, let us know that you have a place where mosquito fish might be able, might thrive. We come out, we'll plant those fish, again, to make sure that anywhere from rice fields, wetlands, horse troughs, koi ponds, all of those things that may breed mosquitoes, we want to be able to plant fish in. The next component is what we call ecological management, and this is a department that we have specifically where we have some heavy equipment. We have a dump truck and backhoe, and we actually work with landowners like US Fish and Wildlife Service, or California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and the Nature Conservancy, those types of things, to where we can help implement what we call best management practices so that landowners are not producing mosquitoes on their own property. And so we have an active program with that as well. And then the final aspect of our integrated mosquito management is chemical control, and that's typically, mosquitoes breed in water, and they have four larval stages in water, and that's where we try to do the majority of our controls. So whether it be a backyard swimming pool, a rice field, a wetland, that's where we'll apply target-specific products in that water to kill the mosquito larvae so they don't emerge as adults. But we do have to do what we call adult mosquito control when we have either high abundance or we find virus activity, and that can include anywhere from a backpack to a truck to even the airplane over residential that we've had a history of doing in years past. Next slide, please. So this is a brief snapshot of West Nile virus activity in California, what we've seen in the last couple of years. And so again, the last few years, we've had just over 200 cases reported in California. However, what I want to do is stress the fact that West Nile tends to be extremely underreported in terms of the number of cases. Typically, the symptoms are flu-like symptoms, and so a lot of people never go to the doctor, they never get diagnosed, never get tested for it. So the reported cases tend to be what we call the more neuroinvasive, more serious form of the disease. And so CDC estimates that for every neuroinvasive form that you have, you have anywhere from 30 to 70 cases that are not reported. So as you can see, the potential for the number of cases are in the thousands statewide in California, people that are being afflicted by West Nile virus. And one challenge here, I want to also try to make sure that people are aware of, is that it's not, it can be a very serious disease, and we want people to be aware of that. In '05 and '05, California Department of Public Health did a study where they did a survey of folks a year after they had had West Nile virus, and almost 50% of those folks were still experiencing symptoms even a year later. So it can be a very serious disease, and we want people to be aware of that and make sure that they're taking appropriate precautions. Next slide, please. So this is a snapshot of West Nile virus activity of what we had in Sacramento County last year. So the red circles are West Nile virus positive mosquito samples that we've collected, and the triangles are positive dead birds. And so you can see it's really concentrated in our population centers there, and we want to make sure that people are aware that this is going to happen throughout the season. We are anticipating a bad season this upcoming, this year, mostly due to the fact that we're in a drought. And while that's a bit counterintuitive, you would think that in a drought, if you had less water, you'd have less mosquitoes. But because West Nile virus is a bird disease, it's actually carried by birds and transmitted by mosquitoes, what happens in drought years is that you have less water, and so then you have a larger opportunity for congregation between both birds and mosquitoes in the same place. And so historically, what we've seen is in drought years, we tend to have a worse West Nile season. So it's something for folks to be aware of. Next slide, please. So another concern that we're dealing with is what we call invasive mosquitoes. And so these mosquitoes are ones that are typically not supposed to be in our area. They're typically found in South America, Central America, Mexico, and of course, originally came from Southeast Asia. This particular '80s egypti mosquito is called the Yellow Fever mosquito, and it's a very aggressive daybiter. And the concern with this mosquito is that it started to establish itself in other parts of California, and it can transmit some of the more exotic diseases, such as Zika, Dengue, and Chikungunya diseases. Other mosquito-borne diseases besides West Nile virus can be transmitted by this particular mosquito, and we've started to see it make its way up through California, and this is a concern, obviously, because we don't want to have local transmission of these other exotic diseases. Next slide, please. So here's a map of, we have found this particular invasive mosquito in Sacramento and Yolo County, actually, and so in 2019, our first detection was in the Citrus Heights area, up there by the Placer County border. And we did some very extensive control and public outreach, and we have yet to find it back in that particular area. However, last year, we did find a large cluster of this particular species of mosquito in the Arden Arcade area, and then in Yolo County, obviously, in winters. And so the concern here is that these mosquitoes typically don't fly very far, and so they end up, they don't migrate in, they're actually brought by people. So people either bring them in their car or when they move, if they're in an area where these mosquitoes are established, and of course, they're more established in Southern California. But we want to make sure that people are aware of the risks associated with these mosquitoes, and that to give the district a call, because this is exactly what we want to do. We want to be able to identify where to go so that we can consolidate our efforts and be more efficient. Next slide, please. So again, here's just a snapshot. These are actual photos of breeding grounds of these particular mosquito species that we found over the last couple of years, so you can see in people's backyards where the flower pots, where the wheelbarrow that's filled up with rainwater. These are perfect breeding grounds for these types of mosquitoes. And so again, the message is very distinct for folks, is to go around your yard about once a week, look for any standing water, and dump it out as best as you can. Next slide, please. So one new strategy that we are looking at, we're looking at some innovative control strategies, and one is sterile insect technique. And essentially, what this is, is this would be a way for us to control a mosquito, and as I mentioned before, only female mosquitoes bite, male mosquitoes just feed on nectar. And so sterile insect technique has been used by the USDA to control screw worms, it's been used by California Department of Food and Ag for the MedFly. And essentially, what happens is you sterilize male mosquitoes, and then you release those mosquitoes into a particular area. They mate with the wild females, and then the progeny is no good. And so this is a very exciting aspect in terms of a new control strategy that is starting to be used throughout various parts of the country. So there was some trial that was done down in the Fresno area, also in Southern California, and also in Florida and Texas, where they've started to use this sterile insect technique as a new and innovative way to try to control mosquitoes. And so this is something that the district is looking at moving forward, and we hope, we hope to potentially, well, we hope we don't have to, but if we do, we're very thankful that a lot of researchers and other companies are starting to get involved in new innovative ways that don't require pesticide applications, which is a good, new way to look at it. Next slide, please. So for us, just moving forward, exploring the use of that sterile insect technique and other control methods, continued surveillance, and making sure that people know what the risks are associated with mosquito-borne disease and West Nile virus specifically, always looking for more outreach opportunities. And the district buys repellent by the pallet. We buy a lot of repellent packets, and so if there are events, hopefully, pretty soon, we'll actually have outdoor events. But if anybody wants repellent, all they have to do is call the district, we'll be more than happy to provide that. We want people to use it, and so we buy it extensive. But if there's any public outdoor events that you guys may be hosting, more than happy to provide information and/or repellent. And of course, we want to encourage the public to report biting mosquitoes. Drain any standing water on their property. Discard any, anything that can hold water that you don't need, but really, just give the district a call when you're being bothered by mosquitoes. Next slide, please. So you can get more information by going to our website, which is FightTheBite.net, or giving us a call on our phone number 1-800-429-1022. And with that, thank you very much for your time, and I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Gary, this is Sue Frost. I just want to thank you. I don't have anyone in the queue with questions, but I want to thank you and your organization for your relentless and consistent work in fighting back these mosquitoes. I remember a couple of years ago when many of our birds died, and they were just dropping, seemed like they were dropping from the sky, and there were several years in Citrus Heights where, at least at my house, we didn't have as many birds for a while, and they're now coming back, and it's a delight to see. But I do know a couple of people who did get the West Nile, and it had a major, it had an impact on the neuroinvasive. I don't know what predisposes you to that. Is there, is there something that predisposes a person to that strong reaction to the, to these mosquitoes, to West Nile?
Yes. There are some things that can be triggers. The older that you are, unfortunately, I think, the older, especially now with this pandemic, right? Your immune system is not as strong as it used to be, and so we're definitely seeing more of the serious form of the disease in folks that are older. They've also done some studies on diabetes, so diabetics tend to have more of a reaction associated with it. But honestly, it really is an individual situation. There are cases of children coming down with a very serious form of the disease, teenagers, people, very healthy folks in their 20s and 30s, but obviously, the majority would be in the older population. And so we do try to reach out to senior centers and making sure that people are aware to use repellent and make sure that they understand what the risks are, and try to avoid those times where mosquitoes are most active, which is usually right at dusk.
Great. Now that I'm a senior, I'm finding out the senior years are not so golden. Thank you, Gary.
It's tough getting older, absolutely.
Thank you so much for that presentation and for keeping us updated and for the work that you do.
And we do not have any public comments.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you, Gary. And we do not have any public comment on this item?
No.
Thank you, Flo. And next item, please.
Okay. Could you please transfer the applicant? So we have an applicant for this item, and I do need to take their oath. Hi, I would like to go ahead and take your oath now, if that's possible.
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. Please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses. I do. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give this board is the truth? So help you God. If you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Okay. Please state.
I do.
Okay, thank you. Please state your name for the record and the statement I have been sworn.
My name is Matt Kiesling. I have been sworn.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kiesling. I'm going to go ahead and read the item into the record now, and we'll start with staff presentation. Brookside Show Park and Equestrian Center Use Permit. A use permit to legalize an existing recreation facility in the AG-20 zoning district for a property located at 11120 Bradley Ranch Road in the Casumnes Community. The environmental document is exempt.
Good afternoon, Leanne.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, I had to use it for the other one.
All right. Leanne Moffett, the planning director, and I will be giving the staff presentation today on the use permit for the Brookside Show Park and Equestrian Center. The site of this facility is generally south of Grantline Road. It's sort of northeast of Wilton, just north of Deer Creek at the edge of the Casumnes River floodplain, and south of Grantline Road. The request before you today is for a use permit to legalize an existing recreation facility, an equestrian park, on just under 32 acres in the agricultural AG-20 zone, a special development permit covering a few deviations from development standards and a typical design review. And we did make a planning director determination that a use permit to the board was the appropriate entitlement level for this sort of activity, so that if there was a precedence anyplace else in the county, that would stand. With regard to history here for this site, there have been components of this facility here for many, many years, and in fact, there was a certificate of nonconforming use for a horseshoe training school and equestrian center back in 1987. That certificate addressed the use of the land. It did have a five-year timeframe with the ability to renew, and there was a change in ownership with the new owner taking over and opening Brookside in 1991. There was business license and electrical permits issued. There was a temporary use permit in 1992, and in 1997, a business license for home-based catering, but the fundamental use never directly got addressed at the end of that five-year period. So this is a site plan. This is sort of looking from the southern end, and the applicant is also going to have a PowerPoint, and they actually have some pretty good aerials, probably better than this graphic right here, looking from the north. But just to cover what's going on here, I'll attempt to kind of describe verbally what's going on. I'm going to start from the left-hand side of this graphic and move to the right. So on the left-hand side, as you enter the property from the northwest, there is a large RV parking area, there are 53 RV parking spaces, and six onsite RVs that can be rented during events, and the applicant indicates between those two, perhaps 100 individuals can be onsite for large events. On the south side, you see those little dark hash-marked areas, they kind of look like rail cars or something. Those are permanent and temporary horse stalls. To the right of that is an area where you have the cafe and snack bar and some of the food facilities, as well as a vendor sale area. And then there are a whole variety of equestrian facilities, including at least five outdoor arenas of varying sizes in the middle, one that has, at least one has stands, a large indoor arena, and two more arenas and writing enclosures and a round pen closer to Dry Creek. There are also some residential units onsite. There originally were seven, and there are now six units. There is a four-apartment block kind of in the right middle, to the right of one of the large arenas. There's a three-bedroom apartment east of the cafe. There was a small unit attached to the cafe that has now been removed, and there's a mobile home on the eastern portion of the site. There's a whole variety of non-RV parking scattered throughout the facility with 142 spaces onsite and an additional 143 spaces offsite in the city of Elk Grove that they have access to for large events. There are also, there's a pool, a golf cart shop, storage areas, water tank, fuel tank, two wells on sites, nine septic tanks, and so there's a lot of components that make up this overall facility. Here are some photos of some of the components, some of the outdoor arenas, indoor arenas, the four-apartment complex. And kind of went through some of the timeline. I'm not going to read this whole slide, I'll let you sort of look at that, but it goes through many of the actions focusing on activities that started in 2018. Planning did allow some of the event uses that had historically been there to continue while they sought compliance, and there were a few other items that were not allowed to be continued while they sought to legalize this use. And that has been the effort here, working with all departments, is to figure out how they can legalize and move this forward on a permanent basis. So the attachment to, to your package is a listing of findings, compliance measures, and more typical use permit conditions. So I wanted to speak to the compliance measures a little bit. You will be adopting those along with the use permit, but those are more short-term actions needed to address things like the building permits and the septic tanks. So those kinds of things are things that they will achieve and then be done, and then the use permit conditions are more of the long-going, long-term operational items. So we did split those up that way. So the recommendations that are before you, the Casumnes Community Planning Advisory Council considered this in September of 2019, and they recommend approval. The design review administrator saw this in November of 2019, also recommend approval, and this was in front of the planning commission in January of this year, and they similarly recommend approval. So this does come before you with recommendations for approval, including from staff. And the last slide is the summary of the recommended actions that you would be taking that are on the front page of your board report, including recognizing the exempt sequoia status, approving the use permit with both the compliance measures and the conditions, the special development permit, and the design guidelines. And that concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you, Leanne. Supervisor Natoli.
Thank you, Leanne, and thank you to your staff and to others, obviously, that have worked on this. This has several years now of tracking as relates to county departments, environmental management, and building inspection along, obviously, with the planning department. And I think today is certainly a significant milestone because it gets to the underlying land use, which then allows, if haven't already been addressed, which many have, some of the other underlying conditions that were noted in the inspection that occurred back in 2018. I just wanted to note, and I know that Mr. Kiesling's on the phone representing Mr. Madden and the Brookside group, but I wanted to be sure that in your slide, you talked about the roadmap to getting compliance. There's been correspondences recently today by Mr. Kiesling, he can reference it if he chooses to, but to the building inspection department outlining, maybe you've seen that or maybe you haven't, but outlining a number of areas where they've already complied with either building code, a fire code, or EMD requirements and other things that are still outstanding, whether you're submitting permits under review and/or working to get the necessary information to the county. And so I just, I wanted to note that, and again, I know that your department's been very integral to this, and again, I've had a chance to follow this, certainly in briefings with you, but also, obviously, hearing from the applicant and others. It's a long-established use that grew a bit over time, but I think this is a very important milestone, but also, I think, recognizes the attributes there, but also recognizes the need to, you know, get compliance on some outstanding issues as well as those that have already been complied with. So I appreciate the work you've done, and again, we'll hear from the applicant. So that roadmap, though, that relates to the building inspection, EMD, when you say the roadmap, is that what that relates to? That was my specific question.
Yes, those compliance measures are really about things like the building permits. And Ms. Springer, who is here in the audience, if there are any questions, our chief building official did provide me a copy of that letter immediately before this.
Okay, good. Again, and again, I think, as I said, I thank Nancy and her staff for being here, and certainly EMD, because it's been required coordination, and some of these weren't as easily complied with as maybe some other things, and it's going to take some work, but I appreciate everybody's work on this. So, okay, good. I didn't have any questions, ma'am chair. I'm here from the applicant, and then I'll make some comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. Mr. Matt Kiesling, did you have a presentation? And would you like to begin at this time?
Yes, Chair Frost, thank you, and Supervisors, thank you for allowing us to be here today before you. Supervisor Natoli, I think, helped us with a nice transition here. I'm going to start where he left off and thank staff. LeAnn Moffett, Nancy Springer, as well as our Principal Planner, Kimber Gutierrez, have been great to work with over the last two and a half years as we've been moving this project and this facility towards compliance. And Brookside Equestrian Park, as the first slide, I think you're, hope that you're seeing now, I will point out, is before you today, hoping to achieve the milestone of having a conditional use permit issued for the underlying facility itself. Next slide, I won't spend a lot of time on the location, but Brookside is located in the Sheldon Community, immediately adjacent to the city of Elk Grove. It's been at this site since, next slide, please, and I'll go to the next slide again to the one that says 1937. You can see aerial photographs leading back to, as far back as the '30s, when this facility started to be constructed. The Bradleys actually owned a ranch down here that extended from Grantline Road south all the way across Deer Creek, down towards Wilton, and this was their horse ranch, as well as cattle ranch. Next slide, you can see on this photo the facilities that are still there today that were actually present in the '30s. Next slide, by the mid-'50s, it's grown quite a bit. And next slide, in 1973, you have more or less the same facilities there that are still present onsite today. You see the upper barns, the lower barns, the indoor arena, offices, residential units, a cafe, as well as the tool shed and farrier area. Next slide, please. And what was going on at that time was something called the Pacific Horse Center. It was actually run by a man named Larry Langer, who's well-known in the horseback-riding industry. He has a large facility down in the Los Angeles area, and up here, he was running effectively a school where people could come and go to camp and become better riders. And associated with that, they would stay onsite, they would be fed in the cafe, and they would also host events. Next slide, please. As Ms. Moffett mentioned, there was a certificate of non-conforming use that was issued for this site in 1987. Somewhere between 1973 and 1987, the zoning code was modified, at which point, it was no longer clear that an equestrian event center was permitted in the AG 20 zone. And so the purchasers who purchased this from Larry Langer sought a certificate of non-conforming use, which was granted, part of which would say they have the right to continue a private post-secondary school for horseback riding, as well as an equestrian center. And actually, next slide, please, associated with that certificate was a map, which displayed all of the facilities that were present onsite at that time. Next slide, please. Fast-forwarding then to today, Brookside Equestrian was purchased by Bill Madden, the current owner, who's our client. He's actually present with us today. If anyone has questions for Bill, he is with us here in the room. But Brookside today continues to be private stables, as well as offers youth riding lessons, therapeutic riding and rehabilitation, and equestrian shows and events. And the bottom of this slide actually shows what the commercial stables onsite look like, as well as the events. Next slide shows you the therapeutic riding operation that has been out at Brookside for the last decade. It's actually a fantastic use. It helps children to deal with mental health issues. They gain the benefits of being able to trust an animal, bond with that animal, and gain a skill and gain confidence, and I think you'll hear from Ms. Chambers later in the presentation. Next slide, also you have the equestrian events, which occur out here from about April to October. It's where various equestrian clubs come in and can rent the facilities to host their own events, and it only occurs on the weekends, typically Friday through Monday during the spring and summer into early fall months. Next slide, please. Associated with that, Mr. Madden operates a series of complementary uses, as Ms. Moffett covered. There is a cafe that serves food. There are vendors that sell items to the participants in the horse show. There are temporary horse stalls for horses participating. There's an area where you can bring in your horse trailer and even your RV and stay onsite with your animal. It really is a location that is an all-inclusive equestrian center. And Bill's background really is in hospitality. He's been a restaurant owner for over 50 years, and if you read the online reviews of this site, people truly appreciate that he goes out of his way to make sure that the events are, every T is crossed, every I is dotted, and people have a great time. Next slide, please. But the fact that this use was removed from the zoning code is, to a certain extent, why we're here before you today. LeAnn mentioned that this has been, this site has been an ongoing issue for compliance with the county since it was inspected in 2018. We had a multi-departmental inspection, which led to a series of violations, but probably the largest of which was that an equestrian center such as, has been occurring at the site for 30 years, technically was not allowed to exist as of right in the AG zone. That being said, there was also nothing in the zoning code that talked about how to permit these things. And so what we needed first was a zoning interpretation, which we received, which likened this to an outdoor recreational use, requiring a use permit from the board, which is why we're here with you today. Next slide, please. So what we're seeking, and hope that you would be supportive of, is granting that use permit to allow Brookside Equestrian Park to continue to operate as it's been operating since 1991, 1992. Mr. Madden has been working collaboratively with the county, both EMD, Building Inspection, Planning Department, Kasumnas, CSD Fire Department, the city of Elk Grove and its planning staff, and he has been making strides to bring this use and all of its component parts and buildings back into compliance so that we can be in accordance with all of the county's code requirements. And we hope that what we've shown you today demonstrates how seriously we've been taking this and how seriously we will continue to take this issue until the county feels comfortable that Brookside is operating in a fashion that it knows is not going to jeopardize the health and safety of the community, but instead is going to continue to be the asset that we all appreciate seeing out there. And with that, I would make myself available for questions, and like I said, Bill Madden is also available for questions.
Okay, at this time, I do not have any questions. I don't know if Mr. Bill Madden would like to speak.
Not at this time unless you have questions. Thank you.
Okay. So we do not have questions. Do we wish to entertain a motion?
We have public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have two people on the phone, I believe. Thank you.
Could you please transfer the first caller? Hi, caller. I'm going to take your oath first, and then you'll be able to start with your comments. Can you raise your right hand in the appropriate responses? I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Okay, and please state your name for the record and the statement I have been sworn.
Armon Newton.
And you could say that you have been sworn.
I have been sworn.
Okay, go ahead and start with your comments. You have two minutes.
All right. My name is Armon Newton. Like I said, like I stated, Brookside is the topic, has been a place that I have been a part of for over about 13 years or so. I'm currently in Kentucky. I am the host of the Kentucky Derby, and I can just tell you, between here and Brookside and the horse facilities I have visited across the country, Brookside is one of the, is one of the best places that you can visit and be a part of. Brookside has been an asset to what I do in the industry with the equine industry. I've been a part of the Kentucky Derby now for seven years, and Brookside has just been an awesome asset to anything equine that we have been associated with.
Armon, this is Supervisor Natoli. In the event that Kentucky ever wants to relocate the Derby to California, we'll certainly be, we'll do accommodate. I think we can find a way to get a use permit to permit that, so.
Wouldn't that be great? I love you. I wouldn't have to commute so far to work.
Oh, that's fun.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Armon.
Thank you.
Okay, could you send the next caller, please? I believe this is our last comment on this item. Hi, caller. I'm going to take your oath first. Please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses. I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Okay, please state your name for the record, and then if you could say the statement I have been sworn.
Brittany Chambers, I have been sworn.
Okay, you have two minutes to make your comments, and please start.
Hi, my name's Brittany Chambers. I'm the owner of CBC Therapeutic Horseback Riding Academy LLC, located out at Brookside Equestrian Park, and Brookside has been a wonderful home for my academy. I have over 100 students. I have seven horses right now, and it is just the best place. All my students love it. All my families love it. It's the perfect facility for me to run my academy out of. We are partnered with the Sacramento Police Department, the mayor, and several other community organizations to help the public and the community just have a positive outlet, and Brookside is our home to be able to provide that outlet for that. So it's just like an absolute wonderful place, and I love that my academy is established there, and, you know, I could, I'd be there forever if I can, because it's just the perfect facility for me to serve all the clients that I have. And I do have clients from all different backgrounds, and you name it, we serve them. So it's just a great place for everybody to come and share the love of horses, and everybody's just really happy. So I'm thankful that Brookside can provide that safe environment for us.
Thank you, Brittany. And that concludes your public comments.
Okay. Ma'am Chair, unless there's any other questions by my colleagues or any other comments by the Planning Director, I'm prepared to move the staff recommendation, and with, again, with thanks to all who've worked diligently on this and for the cooperation it's taken to get here, and certainly to Mr. Madden for, obviously, his patience, but the patience of county staff as well. And I think this is a good thing for our county, and again, pleased to move the staff recommendation.
Second. Thank you, Supervisor Natoli, and we have a second by Supervisor Kennedy. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
And I know that has to be a big relief for many people in the community as well, because I know we have some staff at the county that love that facility as well. So we're excited to see it moving forward under compliance. So at this time, we'll move on to the next item, please.
Okay, for item three, could you please transfer the applicant? Hi, I would like to take your oath first, and then I'll read the item into the record, and then staff will begin with their presentation. Please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses. I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Thank you. If you could both state your name for the record and then say the statement that you have been sworn.
Lynda Kaufman, Synergy Programs.
Marina Wong, Planning Consultant, and I do affirm.
Okay, thank you. And so staff's going to go ahead and start with the presentation at this time. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chris Puhuli.
Good afternoon, Ms. Frost and other members of the board. Chris Puhuli, Principal Planner with the Office of Planning and Environmental Review. I'll be providing the staff presentation for this item. The subject properties associated with this item are highlighted in red and are located at 4612 and 4616 Roosevelt Avenue, which are both zoned RD5 and are developed with two existing residential structures. The subject properties and several other adjacent nearby parcels are part of Synergy Programs' planned Nueva Vista Sacramento campus. Synergy Programs is requesting the board approve an emergency temporary use permit to allow them to use the properties for counseling services related to their congregate care use, which they indicate in their application is necessitated by the COVID pandemic. The board is the appropriate authority to consider this request because the Planning Director cannot make the required findings which would allow for the ministerial processing of this request. As noted in the report package, the site has a lengthy entitlement permit and violation history beginning in 1992, when the board approved a package of entitlements that legalized a residential care use on the site depicted in green on the slide. Beginning in 2015, there were a series of issues related to entitlements, business licensing, and building permits, which resulted in various violations being issued. Additional properties were acquired by the applicant team between 2016 and 2018 with plans to create a more robust campus. In 2019, the applicant submitted an entitlement application package to allow for the expansion of the existing congregate care facility. The application for the Nueva Vista campus covers all of the properties shown in yellow on the slide, or outlined in yellow on the slide. Synergy Programs intends to develop the subject parcels as a campus with onsite services, providing a full spectrum of care for residents. Let's see, sorry. Let me go back one second. The subject properties at 4612 and 4616 Roosevelt were originally identified for clinic and office uses respectively. However, the intent is now to maintain these two structures as living quarters, and the clinic and office use can be accommodated in a new clinic structure proposed as part of the use permit entitlement. So that's part of the separate entitlement that's been applied for, but that's the current thinking with the use of those two properties. As I mentioned, the applicant has requested entitlements to expand their campus, and the project is on track to get to the Planning Commission for hearing later this year. However, the item before the board this afternoon is whether or not overriding public interest exists to allow for the emergency use permit for the two properties during the COVID pandemic. The authority to issue the ETUZ is with the Planning Director or Board, depending on whether or not those specific findings can be made. In the case of this request, the Planning Director cannot make the finding that the proposed use of the property is to support emergency response efforts or to mitigate impacts of an emergency, as documentation verifies that the property at 4612 Roosevelt has been used for counseling services or office uses as early as 2015. As such, the Board is the appropriate authority to determine if an overriding public interest exists to allow the continued use of 4612 and 4616 to support counseling services. Staff have worked with the applicant over the past few months to develop reasonable conditions for the project, which include the following. They will have one year for the emergency temporary use permit with no ability to extend it beyond that one year. Counseling services will be only for the residents of the facility. They will be required, under the draft conditions, to enter into a hold harmless agreement with the county to modify their site while their use permit is being processed, and they will be required to resolve all residential building permit issues. And then finally, they will be required to obtain necessary permits for an alternative location after that one-year period. It's likely that the clinic services will happen in a new building as part of the use permit that they're processing, and so if that building is not constructed within this one-year timeframe, it's likely that they will use a temporary structure which will be permitted separately. I'm sorry. Although the request for the ETUZ is not for the purpose identified pursuant to the to the emergency ordinance for the COVID-19 pandemic, planning staff is recommending approval of the resolution and recommends the board delegate authority to the planning director to issue the ETUZ with the recommended conditions contained in your report package. That concludes my remarks. I'm available for questions as well as the applicant team.
Thank you, Chris. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Chris, real quick, we were scheduled to consider these recommended actions, I believe, on March 9. And there was kind of a last-minute intent expressed by the applicant and I think as well as with staff to take some more time to fine-tune some of the conditions. Can you give us a sample of what some of those are?
Yeah, primarily, the issue that the applicant had brought to our attention before it went to hearing was that they were continuing to cost out the improvements that would be necessary to allow for these two properties to be used as counseling in the long term. And so what they have done, as I mentioned, is that they've rethought the use of those two facilities, two buildings, and have decided that it makes more sense financially to build a new structure for their counseling and office services. And so therefore, the conditions have been reworked. As I mentioned, the condition related to they will have to permit a separate building, perhaps a temporary or modular building for the counseling services after that one-year time period. So a lot of the changes that were worked out between the time that it was supposed to be heard in March and now have been related to reworking that condition, as well as giving a little bit more time for them to secure the hold harmless agreement and resolve their building permit issues.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have the applicants Linda Kaufman and Maria Wong. Would you like to make any comments at this time?
There, I think the Skype call dropped and so Alm is transferring them back into the meeting. They were texting me and I didn't see it.
Hi, Ms. Wong, are you guys back on the line now?
Yes, we are. This is Maria.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I am.
Great. And Linda and Maria, would you like to make some comments? We just concluded with some questions. I don't know what you missed, but at this time, if you'd like to make some comments, this would be appropriate.
Okay, this is Linda Kaufman. I apologize. I missed the presentation, so I'm not sure if there were any questions that were asked. But thank you very much Supervisor for hearing this. And also, big thank you to Chris Shen, Jesse Shen, Chris, and the staff for working on this for so long. I don't know if there were any questions for us, the applicant.
At this time Supervisor Serna had a question.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
So this is Supervisor Serna. And first of all, I want to thank the Synergy representatives for inviting me and some of my staff out to their campus. I think it's probably now two or three years ago, maybe, to do a walk-around and to understand what, at that point, what the plans were, that they were likely to pursue to expand their facility. And if I recall correctly, there was an effort about two years ago to do some outreach relative to the immediate neighbors. This is in a residential neighborhood, in the South, unincorporated South Oak Park neighborhood. And I was wondering, because that occurs, you know, arguably a long time ago now, has there been any further community outreach relative to any of the changes that have taken place in terms of your plans and your intent since two years ago?
And that's a wonderful question. I also want to mention that Supervisor Kennedy also took an opportunity to come tour, I believe it was also about two years ago. Hard to believe it was that long ago. I would say that we've done a lot more outreach. We did some town halls at the Fruit Ridge Collaborative, the former elementary school that was closed next door to us. And so we've done that. Also having the phone number, one of the things that the CPAC had asked for when we had gone to do a presentation was accessibility of having the phone number outside the building. And we made that happen. So, you know, anybody can call us if they need us. We also got very involved with the Oak Park Neighborhood Association, Safety on Stockton. And I think just making ourselves more available in general to any questions if somebody wants a tour. I'll be the first to say that 2020 has been a challenging year, very challenging. But even still, I think that dialogue is there and we're definitely more accessible, or more noticeably accessible, to that community.
Great, thank you.
Supervisor Serna, if I may add, the use permit application is scheduled to be heard by the South Sacramento CPAC on May 19. So it is coming up pretty soon.
Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so at this time, if you don't have any comments, other comments, Linda and Maria, we'll go to public comment if there is any.
We do not have any public comments at this time.
Okay. And so with that, I will call on Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll go ahead and move the staff recommendation and again, express my thanks to the Synergy representatives for, I think, doing a good job so far in terms of community outreach. And I would just hope that they continue to do that.
Second.
And we have a second by Supervisor Natoli. And I want to thank the applicants for their work in the community. And at this time, please vote. Okay, that's a unanimous vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Could you please transfer the applicants for item four, please? Hi, I'm going to take your oath now and then staff will do their presentation. Please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
I do.
Okay. And then if you could both state your name for the record and then say the statement that you have been sworn.
Summerdales, I have been sworn.
Greg Ventura, I have been sworn.
Thank you. So item four is the Escaton Fair Oaks Parking Edition. This is a use permit amendment and design review for a property located at 8091 Village Estates Lane in the Fair Oaks community. The environmental document is a negative declaration.
Okay, good afternoon.
So I'm also on, Stephen Fife is also on the call. Just wanted to make sure.
Oh, could you state your name for the record and say that you've been sworn?
Stephen Fife, I have been sworn.
Okay, thank you. Staff will start their presentation now.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear his last name.
Oh, could you say your last?
Fite.
F-I-T-E?
Fite. F as in Frank, I, F as in Frank, E.
Oh, Fife. Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, Chris Puhuli, once again, with the Office of Planning and Environmental Review. The request before the board is an amendment to Use Permit 81 UP 0050, which permitted the existing congregate care use and a design review to add two parcels to the north of the existing Escaton facility, which will be used for development of additional parking for the facility. The subject parcels are located at 8091 Village Estates Lane and 11300 Fair Oaks Boulevard and are not currently covered under the existing use permit. Escaton is proposing this parking lot expansion project to address a severe parking shortage, which causes employees and visitors to park in neighborhoods and businesses across Fair Oaks Boulevard. Reviewing the key points for the requested entitlements, one of the subject properties is currently developed as a small parking lot, providing overflow parking to the Escaton facility and contains 34 parking spaces. The proposed parking lot expansion project will total 62 parking spaces for staff, visitors, and volunteers. The reconfigured parking lot includes 32 standard parking spaces, 28 compacts, and two motorcycle parking spaces. And the addition will add a net increase of 28 parking spaces. Access to the parking lot from Fair Oaks Boulevard will remain as is, but the internal circulation will be greatly improved as the traffic flow will be conducted in a circular pattern and there will be a connection with the main parking area. Also, as part of the project, the property line that borders residential properties to the north and east will be improved with a seven-foot-tall masonry fence. I'm going to review two of the exhibits found in the report package, site plan and landscape plan. This exhibit here shows the proposed site plan. The white area on the site plan indicates the existing parking lot spaces, and the gray areas indicate where parking spaces are for the proposed project. The plan further shows, a bit hard to tell, but on the northeast portion of the site plan, that the driveway that connects the property to the Village Estates Lane, that will be eliminated as part of this project. I should also point out that the gray areas along Fair Oaks Boulevard will be improved with public street improvements. Switching here to the landscaping plan, which shows the proposed plantings and fencing. Construction of the parking lot will result in the shading requirement of 40% to be exceeded up to 55% or the proposed plantings for a total of 55% shading. A manual gate will be installed at the entrance to the parking lot expansion where it connects to Fair Oaks Boulevard. And conditions are placed on the project related to the closing of the gate during off-peak hours. As I mentioned earlier, there will be a seven-foot-tall masonry wall along the perimeter of the north and eastern boundaries of the project where residential uses are adjacent. The landscape plan also details enhanced entry areas and perimeter and interior landscaping consistent with the development standards in our zoning code. I do want to mention two conditions that staff is recommending the board strike from the findings and conditions of approval with your action today. The first is Condition 16. I do apologize, but the slide incorrectly, slide on the screen incorrectly lists this condition as Condition 15. So I'll read Condition 16 into the record. It says, "Prior to approval of the improvement plans, grant the county right-of-way on Fair Oaks Boulevard if necessary, based on an 84-foot arterial pursuant to the Sacramento County Improvement Standards and to the satisfaction of the Department of Transportation." The applicant has requested that this condition be removed as the necessary right-of-way for future improvements has already been provided to the county. County DOT staff concur and is supportive of the removal of this condition.
Let me just ask a question on that, though. Doesn't DOT do review of the conditions before they ever get inserted into a planning report? So why does that come late in the process?
You're right. It does happen earlier in the process. There is processes in place through our project review committee and the condition review. Occasionally, there are conditions that kind of work their way through where the applicant hasn't questioned the need for the condition. And they make their way through the process and then it happens at the hearing.
Chris, that's just a little bit off course on the answer. The applicant doesn't need to question the need. We have all, we're the holder of the records as it relates to dedication of right-of-way. That's very easy to find. I'm not saying something's going to be overlooked. So I'm not being critical of staff as much as, that's not applicant's responsibility. I mean, they would have the responsibility if that condition went in place. But, you know, I just thought it was a matter of course. We're always checking our records. You got, you know, you know what's been dedicated. You or DOT or Survey Information Permit Section knows right where to look to find those, you know, those dedicated easements and rights-of-way and so forth. And so I guess I'm just kind of curious if we're just cutting and pasting conditions because that, and then if the applicant catches it, fine. If they don't, well, I guess it's there and then they'll have to sort it out later on. And I don't think that's a very fair way to do it. So I guess it's just an alert on my part that we need to be a little more thorough, I think, in making sure that when we're calling for, that's a dedication of private property into the public rights-of-way. We have record of whether that's been done or not, unless there's something else here that I'm not aware of that's not explained in your notation of this. But it just occurred to me, that's a little odd when you say this applicant's responsibility. I don't think that falls solely on the applicant. That's staff, whoever's reviewing that and submitting that, that's our responsibility as well. It's a shared responsibility.
That's correct.
Thanks.
Secondly, Condition 17 requires the applicant to eliminate the driveway to the north. This is that northeast area that I mentioned where the driveway will be eliminated. And it requires that it be eliminated and replaced with curb, gutter, and sidewalk. As the existing condition of the driveway has rolled curb with gutter, the applicant has requested that the driveway be eliminated, but that they keep the existing improvements as is with the gutter, the curb and gutter. Again, DOT staff have reviewed the request and concur with the removal of the condition. I should note that Matt Darrow from the Department of Transportation is in attendance should there be any additional questions about the two conditions that are slated for removal.
Excuse me, Chris. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Chris, for the presentation. So what happens to that driveway, then?
My understanding is that the driveway will be ground up. This is going to give that property owner a little bit more room now to use. So the driveway will be ground up, but the improvements at that little bulb are going to be, those will remain.
So Escaton would have otherwise had an easement for that access to that driveway, and they'll give up that easement and it'll go back to the?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Turning to the advisory recommendations, the Fair Oaks CPAC is recommending approval of the proposed project. The Drac Met and also recommends the board find the project in substantial compliance with the countywide design guidelines. And finally, the Planning Commission is also recommending approval. Staff is recommending the board determine the environmental analysis, prepare for the negative declaration as adequate and complete, and adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Approve the use permit amendment, subject to findings and conditions, with a notation that Conditions 16 and 17 are to be removed. Find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Chris. I do not have questions. Do you want to, at this time, I'll ask the applicant if they wanted to make any comments, if any one of the applicants would like to speak. Summerdales, Greg Ventura, Stephen Fife. Hearing none. I will ask Supervisor Desmond has a question. Did you want to go to a public?
Just a comment, if we're not going to hear from the applicant, just briefly. You know, thank you. I appreciate the thorough presentation and I really appreciate Escaton being a very good neighbor in the community here. And I think this will be a great thing to ensure the safety of their employees. What I'd really like to see is an applicant that listens to the concerns of the community and makes changes to the plans, which they did here, including, you know, addressing the concerns of one of the public commenters who wrote in. So I just wanted to pass that along. And I don't know if we have any public comment on this matter, but I'll be supporting the staff recommendation today.
We do have one.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Desmond. We'll go to public comment. Could you please transfer the caller? Please transfer the caller. Thank you. Hi, caller. I'm going to take your oath first. Would you please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses I do? Do you swear? Okay. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Okay, and just state your name for the record and the statement, "I have been sworn."
Marty Puentes, I have been sworn.
Okay, and you have two minutes to make your comment. Thank you.
Do I start now?
Yes.
Okay, yes, thank you for answering my call. I have several questions. One, what is the traffic impact going to be on the immediate neighborhood? Number two, what studies of impact is going to happen on the neighbors? Have any of those studies been done? Number three, have all the adjacent neighbors been contacted? And if so, is there a way that some of their answers can be shared? And let's see, finally, yeah, I'll wait for the rest of the responses or answers, or if not, if we don't get to them, can someone please contact me? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is Summer Dale's. Can I address those questions, or?
Sure. Thank you, Summer.
Sure, absolutely. So thank you for calling in, Marty. So as far as the traffic impact, and I think that Greg with Warren Engineer can also jump in at any time, we don't anticipate a greater traffic impact, as these vehicles are already coming and going. It's really just where they currently park is hindrance, if they have to cross Fair Oaks Boulevard, and it's a safety concern. We have been in contact with the neighbors in the adjoining area, including the HOA. We've met with them several times and spoke with them. And then the last question, if any studies have been done to how it would impact the neighbors. We have spoke to them about requests for lighting. We've made those changes, as well as fencing. We've added height to the fence, so I do believe we've done our due diligence to accommodate neighbors.
And this is Greg Ventura, in regards to the traffic. Since the goal of the parking lot is to take vehicles that would normally be parked on the street, off the street, and into their parking lot, it would be a reduction in influence that the cars parking on the street would have on traffic. This is, the goal of the parking lot isn't to increase flow of traffic in, it is to decrease the amount of impact that the existing facility has on the surrounding areas parking.
It's my understanding that it will be a reduced impact on the community, because they will have a place to park. Chris, do you want to respond?
Yeah, just perhaps, maybe to add, you know, obviously, there was an initial study and negative declaration that was prepared for the document that did evaluate traffic impacts and concluded that it would not increase vehicle trips and not have an impact. As far as the question about public notification, obviously, as part of the entitlement process, there is notification provided at the, for the CPAC meeting, but also for the Planning Commission and Board hearing, where property owners within 500 feet, as well as tenants, are notified of the project and of those meetings and hearings.
Thank you. And I think that we're still in public comment, so.
And we do not have any more public comments.
Okay. I want to thank the applicants for being here. At this time, I don't have any Board members in the queue to speak, so I will.
Move the staff recommendation?
Second.
Thank you. Supervisor Desmond has moved the recommendation, and a second by Supervisor Kennedy. Please vote.
I think it was Serna.
That was my second, but it's all right.
Oh, oh my. I'm all right. I could have sworn, I must have been looking at you when he said it.
No, I've been working on throwing my voice.
This is like unbelievable. My ears are going. Okay, thank you very much. And next item, please.
Okay, for item number five, we do not have anyone in the queue for item number five, but I am going to be asking the Board to drop this item. This is the Alberta Specific Plan Implementation Workshop.
And I'll go ahead and make a motion to drop the item. Second by, was it you, Supervisor Serna?
It was Supervisor Kennedy.
Oh, my. I'm okay.
It was me.
Okay, this time, it's Supervisor Kennedy. I think they're tricking me. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
And next item, please.
That was the County Executive Comments.
I don't have any, thank you.
Okay, and we do not have a closed session this afternoon. And do we have any comments from Councilmember, Supervisor Serna, please?
Thank you. I just wanted to publicly thank, because I don't think we've done it yet, but I wanted to publicly thank our outgoing Chief of Probation, Lee Seal. I think we're all well aware, he's been promoted to work with the Superior Court System, and in the six years, I think it's six years, that he's been our chief. I think we can all say that he's been fairly remarkable at the post, and been a very forward thinker and a very progressive thinker when it comes to problem solving in the world of probation, and has actually worked to kind of expand what a successful probation department does and looks like, and how they fit into our broader community. And I know that if we didn't have the pandemic restrictions, we'd probably do a little bit more fanfare for him upon his departure, and perhaps that's in the plans, I don't know. But I didn't want too much time to pass since that headline broke last week, and wish him well in his new endeavor, and it's certainly our loss.
It is, and I thank you, Supervisor Serna, for bringing that up. Are we, will we be able to formally acknowledge Chief Seal?
I will work with Chief Seal on doing something, yes.
Yeah, he's, he'll be a hard act to follow.
He's the fourth Chief Probation Officer I've worked with, no, fourth or fifth in my tenure, and he's literally transformed that department. He's done a remarkable job.
And so many positive things with the young people and the garden and the programs. He's amazing.
Yes, I agree.
We're going to miss him. Thank you, Supervisor Serna.
That was me.
Oh, you guys are killing me. With that, I do not see any other Board members in the queue to speak. Ann Edwards, did you have any, you did not have any comments? Okay. So at this time, this meeting is adjourned.